You're good, Joe.
Joseph, we are good.
Motion to open.
Second.
All in favor?
I agree.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have no board of committee reports on here. Do everything, Martha.
I have an announcement today.
Sure.
I'm Martha Taylor, town planner, and I just wanted to let everybody know that next Tuesday, April 29th, FEMA representatives are coming up to hold an open house. It's going to be over at the Newbury Elementary School cafeteria from 5:00 to 8:00. And the FEMA reps will be there. They're going to set up stations with a map so people can view the maps. And the representatives will talk a little bit about insurance questions as well. So, everybody's encouraged to come. Anybody who's at home watching, please come to the elementary school next Tuesday. And if you have any questions, bring them with you, or you can view your flood maps.
Thank you.
All right. We have a public hearing scheduled for 7:15 between now and there. Tracy, you got any stuff for us?
Yep. Just wanted to let you know the snow and ice deficit has grown slightly. We're at 157, 944. And also for this evening, I have the warrants. Kathy has warrant documents available for your signature and action. There are a couple of changes on the documents that I sent you for review since our last meeting. I incorporated all of the votes that we had taken. And there were two additional changes. Our insurance expense, the premiums were projected to come in at $159,390. And the actual premium came in at $127,296. So, a little bit of a decrease there. And also, the Essex North Shore Agricultural and Technical Assessment was, has been adjusted to $62,142. They did not realize that Byfield was part of Newbury, so only sent us a portion of the assessment. So, those are incorporated into the new document as well as the items that you voted at your last meeting.
Okay. And so...
It's just to be signed.
But does that change any other things, the adjustments for those? Any other items on the...
No.
Okay.
No, those are the only changes.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay.
So, I guess we have to move to approve the changes?
Yes.
So, I move to approve the changes?
Second. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor of the changes for the warrant?
Aye.
Okay. Good. Okay. So, final review, approve and sign warrant for the special town meeting first. Okay. This is the same thing we looked at?
That's...
Exactly.
Yep.
Okay. Motion?
Yeah, motion to...
Second. Questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Special town meeting. All right.
You might want to decide this now. Wesley's fine.
Yeah. Might as well.
And now, this warrant is the same we discussed last week, except for the changes you just outlined.
Yeah.
All right. Motion?
Yeah. Motion to approve as amended. Duh. That was difficult.
Questions? Discussion? Questions? Discussion? No? Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Look at those stuff. Now, we want to sign those. Has B been struck? Kathy?
Excuse me?
Has B on the new business been taken out, or is it in...
Been removed.
Removed?
Yes.
Okay.
First page and last page.
Two spots. The other one is... Up there. Okay. Did you get both of them? Hmm? Did you get both?
Yeah.
All right. Next item. Harbor master appointments recommended from Chief Riley. He recommended Daniel Brown and Anthony Papoulas as assistant harbor masters.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any questions? This is... You're going to be happy with these gentlemen?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Both very experienced, and Mr. Brown has a captain's license. Both very nice people. We'll continue the friendly atmosphere down on the road.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. 2014 business license renewal for Universal Visions, 72 new reports turned by... Motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay. All paperwork's in, Kathy, in this and everything? And this is a renewal?
It's a renewal.
Okay. We've had no problems in the past?
No.
No? Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Use of the upper green by North Shore Cyclists for a rest stop for their Blazing Saddles Century Ride, August 16th, requested by Paula Passone and James White. Is there anyone here from there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Okay. Good. Could you get up and just tell us what you plan on doing?
Well, we've been doing the century for about, I think, 16 years coming here. And the green is used as a 50-mile rest stop before the century ride. And we provide basically peanut butter sandwiches and cold drinks and let people rest on the green. And we're usually there from about 10 o'clock in the morning till about 2:00 in the afternoon.
Okay. We ask that you coordinate it with our police department. Just, you know, talk to them ahead of time, make sure they're all happy with it.
Yes.
Okay? And clean up your mess afterwards. Okay? Not that you'll make a mess, but...
Better than we came.
Okay. Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Questions? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck. Plum Island Beach coma license. Is Greg here?
I don't see Greg.
What? Greg's not here? Okay. Let's...
Motion to table.
You want to table it? Wait until he comes?
He's not here.
Okay. What if he comes later?
Then we'll take it up again.
Okay.
You want to put it off to the end?
Table it, and then if he does show up, you're right. We'll put it on the table. Okay. Good.
Does Sam have any comments?
Yeah, that's the problem.
It's okay.
Could you give us an update of what he needs? Okay?
I forgot Sam's...
Yeah, I did too.
Yeah.
Sorry, Sam.
That's all right. Sam Gressler, the building commissioner. In regards to the beach coma, the questions come up as to whether or not they should or could have entertainment there. With the addition of entertainment, they changed their use classification from an A2 under the building code to an A2NC, which is nightclub. With that change in use, any occupants or occupant load 50 or greater would require the sprinkling of the building.
Really?
Yeah. Back after the station nightclub fire, they amended Mass General Law 148, 26G. Chapter 3 of the Acts 2004 came out, which would require any existing nightclub or restaurant with an occupant load over 100 to be sprinkled. And their occupant load at the beach coma is just under 100. But where it's a change in use, it's viewed as a new use group, so they would be at the stricter standards. Along with that, to satisfy building code, they would also need approval from the zoning board under the nonconforming use section of 974D, which is any change or alteration of a nonconforming use, which it certainly would be from restaurant to nightclub. Assuming they get approvals and want to spend the money to sprinkle, then the last question that neighbors have is noise. And that's really a subjective piece that's going to be up to the building, the Board of Selectmen rather, to determine if there's an acceptable way to soundproof the building. And then again, is that cost effective for the owners? But those are the hurdles that they need to take care of, is their zoning approvals, entertainment license through selectmen, sprinkling of the structure, and then also potential soundproofing.
Okay. Thank you.
With that, I guess it's really up to the owners.
Yeah? You have a question?
No, not a question for you. I'm John Valo with National Grid.
Yeah.
It's just so... I mean, I'm due the form, but I have an open order regarding, I haven't had the opportunity to meet with the owner yet, regarding the light. He pays for a floodlight for the parking lot. He did have a conversation that seemed as though the town was interested in having a park around there. However, there are people who aren't interested in having it there. And the truck has made numerous stops out to reposition the floodlight to try and satisfy the situation. And I'm not necessarily sure the satisf... It's been moved so many times that it's... So, in conversation with him, I haven't had the opportunity to actually meet with him in person, but maybe the light issue could be decided on. It's on a pole opposite side of the road. It's a public pole. But he's paying for the light. It's a floodlight here back in the parking lot across the street.
All right. Sam can... Matter of fact, Sam and I were talking about a similar, a related thing to that. Before, he had a light that illuminated his sign, and it was a ground light that went up to the sign. Correct, Sam?
Correct.
And what happened is during some, whatever, it like was tipped, and it was shining at one of the other people's windows. Okay? And so, they were concerned about it, and he went out and fixed that or whatever it was. But that was one light concern. This particular one you're talking about, I don't know anything about. Does anyone else?
Yeah, I've dealt with this before.
Yeah.
I know National Grid's been out there trying to position it right. I think probably the solution is going to be to have the beach coma do something with some sort of directional shielding so that it doesn't spread to the neighboring properties. Try and redirect that light specifically on the parking lot. I don't think we're ever going to have everyone happy. It's a light. It, you know...
Yep.
It does what it's supposed to do. It lights up the parking lot. But could we control it better?
We don't buy shields for them anymore.
Okay. Is it possible for the owners to provide shields if they want to pay for it, or is that something National Grid just doesn't want to pay?
As far as I know, the company doesn't make them available. I can begin with. Also, the light he has, I'm pretty sure is an old one. Anyway, which is really not offered anymore? It's a floodlight.
Is there a newer fixture that would have a shield?
There is, and they won't be happy with it because they're already going through this with other situations on the island. The newer ones are more efficient and much brighter, and they're not offered...
In a floodlight? OBD?
They're not. They're not. They're actually, they're high press of sodiums instead of the old mercury vapors. And they're not offered as many sizes. So, I don't know what size he's got there now. It's not a real big one. But if you put the, replaced it with a new available fixture that we provide, even the smallest one would be brighter.
Okay.
The trouble, I've spoken to the trouble man that's actually on the truck. And he's kind of exhausted as far as how many times he can position it and still have The only alternative I've found in the past, but it won't light the parking lot as well, but avoid his wider light, is a street light, which is available on a lot more sizes.
Okay.
But again, in that case, you'd have to be, you know, even though it's on your pole, you'd have to be concerned about, you'd want to be sure that if it was going to be changed, that he was being built, because it would look just like the one you're up anywhere in that case.
Okay.
So, you'd want to be sure. I haven't actually physically talked to him yet. I've only on the phone.
Yeah.
I haven't been able to meet him on site. I've been holding the order for quite a while.
Okay.
I think it goes back to last fall.
Probably.
I'll coordinate with the chief and with the beach coma and see what option seems to be the best for public safety with the parking lot and...
We're in touch all the time. Whatever you want.
Was this one for the crossing for people when they leave to get to the parking lot?
No, it's actually on the side...
It's for the parking lot?
It's on the first pole and on the side street.
Okay. All right.
Lights the back of the parking lot.
Yep.
But I'm sure it also lights, you know, pretty hard to... I'm sure it also lights people's houses as well.
Yep.
It is a floodlight.
Where is the closest street light? Can you remember?
Don't know, but probably not on the side street, probably out on, probably on the pole, on the main road.
Hmm.
It's kind of specific for the back of the parking lot. I questioned whether, you know, given the area and situation from a walking standpoint, it might be a help, but as far as security on the island, I wouldn't think that...
Now, did that come out of us, the request for the light? Can we remember?
Did what come out?
The request?
As far as the parking lot, I don't believe so. Police didn't request it. No. I think it was just, he was trying to accommodate his patrons and have them, you know, be able to get to their cars with some adequate lighting.
Yeah, because something, when you said that it might have been our request, it didn't quite sound...
No, no, it's not. Well, he mentioned that, I thought he mentioned to me that it was in lieu of something else for the town to have light for the parking lot.
Okay.
But...
Not the mower.
Whatever.
Yeah, I got to discuss it.
Sam, coordinate that. Okay.
Whatever the...
Yeah, I'll get in touch with the end.
Yeah, and see what the final solution is so we're not continually addressing lights.
Okay. All right. Good.
Sam, I actually have a question back to the entertainment license. Obviously, this came up because he keeps coming back to us for, you know, individual requests for entertainment and so forth. Is it clear under the law when you can... Is there any sort of dividing line between these one-off requests that go on forever versus, you know, when you're actually in the category of entertainment?
Right. And I have two questions regarding that, because I have some concerns, not only with one-time entertainment licenses at establishments that serve alcohol, but also one-time liquor licenses for places like The Grange, The Fire Hall, where we have a significant number of people going in and we're now serving alcohol. I tried looking for the Mass General Law there, and I found there isn't one. It comes down to local jurisdiction and then case law. So, I have turned it over to Town Council to look at the case law to see where that threshold is currently within the courts. But for the most part, it's looking like it's local jurisdiction. The problem we have there is, you know, if the time ever comes where there's a tragedy down there and we've allowed entertainment in the fashion of what's defined as a nightclub, is one too many then. And I don't know the answer. Again, that's why I turned it over to Town Council to see if there's a rule of thumb type of number out there that's what folks are comfortable with.
And of course, we, being a nonconforming use in a residential neighborhood, we always, we often get into these tension situations between the business owner and the local residents and so forth.
Yeah.
Well, my own is what it is, obviously. There's a lot of history out there, but so we've got to deal with the situation as it's presented to us, it sounds like. Except for maybe some guidance from case law, it's really entirely in our lap at this point, is your guess.
It's pretty much, yeah. And again, with those one-day liquor license and entertainment licenses, the only thing in addition that I found is when the Board of Selectmen issue, there is requirements for confirming with, you know, like this, with the fire chief. You know, at least having a conversation with him as to what size that event's going to be, the location, the lighting situation, the noise levels, and whether or not, one, he feels it's adequate to issue those one-day requests, or, you know, would there be additional provisions or protections needed to move that forward or not.
Not putting you on the line, Sam, but there was a period of time there that we thought we might be hamstrung by a certain number of these one-time liquor licenses that could be voted on within a calendar year.
Yep.
Is that still true or not true?
And that's what I have Town Council looking at.
So, we might have some respite from the 12 number?
Yes.
Possibly, yeah.
It's 30 a year.
30 a year. So, that...
Wow.
That might be okay then.
On the one-day liquor licenses?
One-day liquor license.
Is that under ABCC?
Yeah.
Because I called them, they couldn't tell me.
But I mean, if...
No, but it's 30 a year.
If that's the case, and it turns out to be that, I mean, I think that changes some stuff.
Yeah. Certainly, we want to know what we're, you know, or at least you guys, I'm sure, would want to know what you're approving and whether or not you're exceeding what's allowed.
Yeah. 30 a year. I go back with Kathy on that, and for years now, there's been certain places that have a lot, and I've checked with her, made sure we're not exceeding the number 30.
Okay.
I don't know where it comes from, honestly.
I don't either. And that's the problem, is I haven't been able to find it. The beach coma's been looking to see, they can't find anything on the entertainment, although that's different than the one-day liquor license. So, I just wanted, like I said, I asked Ginny to clarify for us.
Which would be good, because the one-day liquor license would be what, you know, our side of town's worried about sometimes. So, they never do more than 30 a year, right?
I was very concerned with the fire hall.
They might get close some years, but they never go over.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's good information. So, we'll check that out.
All right.
That'll be good.
We had a public hearing at 7:15, so...
Hope you do better on this one than you did on the light.
See, it is at 7:15, we can get to John.
You started it.
All right. All right. This is John, he's been before us.
Before.
He's got a thing for, he's going to put in an electric, I don't know, a piece of equipment.
The petitions at the...
If you could go to the microphone, then the people at home could hear. And introduce yourself just so everyone knows.
National Grid, electric. The petition's at the request of the customer to have underground service versus overhead to a new home at Fixt Hotterson Road. So, the installing, the customer would be installing at the company's supervision, conduit from pole two to his private property, where there'd be a line of demarcation. What's installed in the road would be owned and maintained by the company. The line of demarcation is for what's owned and maintained by the customer.
Okay.
There's been concerns, I've been, and I've worked with, about this, especially out there now where there's water and so on. What we own, we have to mark. It's shown as we own it on our record, so as far as safety is concerned, we're supposed to mark what we own. There's requests for this all the time, and it's been a little lenient in the past, but now we're trying to work with the electrical inspectors here and Newbury Board to try and make sure it's done. If it's going to be done, it's a lot more expensive for the customer, but make sure it's done this way so that it gets marked out.
Okay.
What's in the public hearing? It's not at our request, it's at the homeowners' request.
All right. Motion?
Yeah. Motion to approve.
Second. Any questions? Discussion? I just wanted to make a comment in that in the past, we've had some complaints about poles down there, and this should be a step in the right movement, putting it underground, I guess. So...
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Yep. Good. All right. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Cross out public hearing.
Now, we've got the appointments for the Board of Fire Engineers. We have some resumes. We have a letter of recommendation. Let's see. Why don't we start with a letter of recommendation? We'll start with this. I would like to submit the following names for appointment to the Board of Fire Engineers for the ensuing year. William Pearson, Douglas Giandron Jr., Wallace Zilla, Timothy Wehren, Robert Dash, Nate Walker, Justin Webb, Terrence Martin. Now, I've also got penciled in here Ed Donley, Channing Howard...
Doug.
Doug.
Doug who?
Doug who?
Our conservation agent.
Oh, Doug Packard. Okay. We need last name. All right. And so, what we've got here is, there are currently seven...
Seven.
Board of Fire Engineers members that are...
Eight.
There's eight that are up for redo?
Yeah, four each side.
All right. You got seven now, and you're asking for eight.
You're asking for eight.
Yep.
Okay.
My recommendation is put on the, how we do it every year, or we have been doing it in the past, is we, I ask each, we have one chief and two deputy chiefs, and all the rest are captains, just started back when Dr. Russo was here. And what I do is use it by participation, but I usually ask each deputy if the people that he has, he likes, and if he wants them, and on each side. And anybody new, we take out of the board, out of the each, we have three lieutenants on each side. And what they do is the company votes those in. So, there's a company, because we had problems at one time, because the company said they had no participation on how the officers were elected. In the past, they were all elected by the companies. So, what we do now is if there's a person in there, we let them go through the ranks, and if they participate, if we lead them along and make sure that they're going to be good officers, and after a few years, if somebody drops out of the Board of Fire Engineers, we take one of the lieutenants and discuss it with the deputy chiefs, myself, and we pick somebody. And at this time right here, we picked TJ Martin, he's been a lieutenant for several years, he's very good on training, with the younger guys. He's been through the firefighter one, firefighter two. As you know, right now, most of our people, a lot of our people go through firefighter one and firefighter two, which is about 330 hours. We have two going to go through at this time at the Academy of Stowe. The last one was in Byfield, that we had a class on that. And hopefully, you know, this is the one that we want this time, we felt is, he'd be very good at, is John at this.
No.
You know, the whole Board of Fires is...
I'm still confused. I don't understand it.
You don't understand?
No, I really don't. Okay?
Okay.
The process, I guess. Okay? Because it would seem to me, never mind.
Well, most of our whole thing's participation. You can have somebody that becomes on the Board of Fire Engineers, and if he never shows up or isn't around, there's no sense in having more. We use them as, if I'm not there, the deputies take charge. If the deputies aren't there, the captains take charge, and so down the line, until it goes to lieutenants or engineers on the trucks. So, all depends who's there. Now, they don't get any money, the Board of Fire Engineers isn't paid. They get the same money as everybody else does, $16 a ten cents an hour. We haven't ever got paid. We're a volunteer, volunteer board, the Board of Fire Engineers.
Now, the officers have to come from the Board of Fire Engineers?
They work themselves up. Right now...
But I mean, if someone's going to be a captain or lieutenant...
Yep.
By definition, that has to be a Board of Fire Engineer person?
Yep.
Or could it be someone that you appoint from outside?
It's either.
Yeah, but you and I...
It probably could be that way, but that's not the way we do it.
Okay.
We make sure that the people that we have participate more than anything, and they're qualified to be on it. And it takes a number of years to do this on the board. Like myself, I've been in 44 years, and the two captains, the two deputy chiefs, they're about 25 years each, and then so on down the line. And it's experience that we're looking for. And... And, you know, I've been chief since nineteen ninety-eight, no one's good for it. Haven't had any lawsuits, we don't have any. And we've done very well on how we do things. And, but the companies, each company wants to get involved in how we put an officer in, and that's what we do, we give them the opportunity. And some people become a lieutenant, and they just don't show up, they don't, they don't pan out. So we, the company will vote them out the next time, and then we decide and say, okay, but we kinda let them work themselves up like that, how it's done.
Any other questions, the chief?
Yeah, just a clarification, maybe Tracy can help us. So as I understand, looking through the law and my attempt to deal with the legalese, it would appear as though that the, we can point somebody from the outside if we so choose. I mean, I understand what tradition has been, but as I read this, if we did decide for some reason that that was important, we do have that ability under the special act, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, you could, but the problem comes with the two companies.
I understand.
They, they, we probably wouldn't have them or fire scenes. They haven't earned the respect in how to become an officer, you know, I mean, that's how we do it. You know, we bring them up that way.
And again, in terms of the chain of command, then?
Yeah.
We appoint the Board of Fire Engineers traditionally based on the chief's recommendation, and then they take care of working with the two fire companies on the, sort of the details. In other words, it's neither our desire nor our role to micromanage the two fire companies.
Correct.
Our job kind of ends with the Board of Fire Engineers, which is our interface to the two fire companies.
You appoint the engineers, they elect a chief among them, and they're responsible for running the Newbury Fire Department.
That was my understanding, I just wanted to make sure.
Billy, I guess what's transpiring somewhat, as the fire department changes, which, you know, the changes might not be apparent yet, but for instance, we're talking about maybe a fire engine, and certain other things that the town, you know, through some good communication through the town, we increase certain wages at the, you know, we put them on the warrant for consideration and things like this, so as some of the ability for the town to interface with the fire department increases, it seems to me that the town sometimes doesn't have a succinct understanding, even though we have Mike and Chuck sometimes, and, you know, I seemingly know something sometimes. But I think what we're thinking of would be to maybe appoint someone to the Board of Fire Engineers this time, that is also a person that has volunteered to be on the Board of Fire Engineers, that would interface between the Board of Fire Engineers, he wouldn't be going to fires, he wouldn't become an officer. He would fulfill some of the same requirements that David talked about in the appointing abilities of the selectmen, and we're considering Doug Packer. So I was gonna ask you right out, does that bother you as Fire Chief?
I don't think it's necessary because of the Board of Fire Engineers. We go directly back to you, I don't think it's needed or necessary. We work with you now on most everything. I don't know what, what the difference would be if he's on or any other person that we have on our board.
Well, the thing that Doug would, would do is he would be liaisonal. He would be able to bring back information to the town. I mean, unless I go to a Board of Fire Engineers meeting, and I, it's not like I need to know, but I don't have any idea what's going on. And, I mean, I think as things enter the next period of time when there's shrinking incomes for the fire companies, you know, that's been some of the discussion. I mean, Joe, Mike, Chuck, what do you think? About Doug?
Okay.
I mean.
I have no problem with it.
I mean, should I make, you want me to make a motion?
Why don't we start out with a motion on basically the.
And that changes the number of eight.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Yeah, eight's bad.
I'll make the motion. I'll make a motion that we appoint the chief's recommendation for the eight, well, now it's gonna be, because we're gonna add their recommendation for the slot that was open. Because, and that's important, because that's the leadership of the Newbury Fire Department. Adding Doug Packer, he would be a ninth member, and I have no problem with it. The worst thing can happen, we try it for a year, if it works, fine. If it doesn't, we'll make another change. Down the road, I think possibly that these appointments probably should be sagging over three years. We're, we're nine, nine members now, there should be three, three, and three. So you're not changing the whole board every year.
Is that, is that a state statute, the one-year appointment bill? If I remember, I think it is.
Yeah, it is right now, yeah.
Okay, so that would mean a home rule petition go through Boston to change that. But it, it kind of wouldn't be a bad idea when you think about it, you know?
I always started off with Dr. Russo doing it, we had four on each side. You know, we were bringing the companies together in the last ten years. So we do work together quite a bit right now. And what we had was, it was four people for each side. And what we, if we hadn't have any problems, they told us, because the, the chairman of the Board of Selectmen is the highest person we believe in, in our chain of command at all of this public safety, and we always come back to you. So if we have a tie, if we ever had a tie, that's what we were, that's what we were supposed to do when we designed this, when Dr. Russo and the, you did this once before. But we've never had a tie, we work very well together now, and, you know, we're both comfortable.
See, what it is now, Billy, and it's even hard for the selectmen too, we've got capital planning committee, the finance committee in the selectmen, and there's all, and now we have a town administrator. So there has to be more communication on how we go forward on things. And to be honest, sometimes it's hard to get it from you guys, and I don't mean it to be negative, it's just as hard to get some of the things we need. So some of the thinking was that if we can put someone from the town, someone that's a pretty neutral guy, and, and, you know, that it would facilitate that. He would be involved with you guys, you would have a chance to talk to him, and it would allow us to have more clearvoyance into what we need to know if it's gonna be fruitful for us to help more as time goes on.
Well, we always had one of the selectmen, Michael was the liaison for the selectmen at our meeting, and Mark Connors was from the finance committee, was, he comes to our meetings, he's a liaison from there. And we do send minutes to our meetings since two oh eight, we'd send them to you every time. We're in contact with Tracy all the time, and she asks us any questions with Doug, we can get us immediately. I really don't, you can do it, except that's your order to do that, but I don't see it as necessary. We always have communications with you at any time, and you can always come to our meetings. We have, we post our meetings every, every time, and Doug sends everything back to you, can read it, we put out a letter in the town report every year. Well, that's what we hoping to do. Like I tell you, I, you could put him on, but I don't see it as necessary, but.
Well, let me make a motion.
Up to you.
Let me make a motion, then, that we accept everyone that Billy has recommended with the addition of Doug Packer to the Board of Fire Engineers.
I agree, you made it.
Oh, did you make it?
Yeah.
Well, then, Michael, I'll second it.
Okay.
David, you're sitting there perplexed.
Actually, I'm not perplexed, I guess, you know, I've served on a lot of boards and committees, both at the town level and many other places as well. I always get worried when these committees or boards start getting bigger and bigger. You know, just it gets harder to schedule meetings and so on, and so that's, you know, I already thought eight was a little bit big, but I completely understand the reasoning. You know, I kinda thought, well, maybe three from each company would make more sense than, than four, and if we added Doug, that would get up to seven, but I'm just, that's my only concern. I, I do think that, although, you know, I think there's been a good faith effort to. Sometimes I know with our other boards, we don't do as well as we ought to.
We have five selectmen, and sometimes we have trouble.
I know.
State statute is, what's the range, it's up to eleven, right?
No more than twelve.
Twelve, up to twelve, yeah.
Boy, good luck scheduling a meeting.
But you don't have to have everyone there.
Yeah, I know, I just.
Chuck, we haven't heard from you.
Stand quiet. Yep.
All right, all right, motions are made, seconded, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. TJ, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Congratulations, CJ. Also, I congratulate you that we have so many people interested in the position. Sometimes we can't fill our boards, so.
I'm doing very well on the firefighter one, firefighter two, but in the gym, it's a company, they go, what, classes, three hundred and thirty hours, they do three days a week, and every other Saturday, and it's, they do it for nothing. We don't pay them anything to go, we just have to make sure they have their gear and stuff, and it's quite a thing to go through that, and I'll be able to go in this time, which is great.
Yeah, I'd like to see all you guys at the town meeting. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
New business license, William Powers.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Think you wanna do the forest wardens also, please? You need to appoint them also.
Only names.
That includes the forest ward.
Oh, all right, is that, it's a separate thing, it's not on here?
Yeah.
It is, right below it.
It's below it.
It's Board of Fire Engineer appointments.
Well, it's on the, it's on the chief's letter.
Chief's letter, okay.
I move that we also appoint the, his recommendations for the forest ward, the deputy forest ward.
All right, second?
Yes, second.
Okay, second. Questions, discussions? All right, for people's information, I asked Mike about it today, and it's a separate thing at the state level.
Yep.
The forest fires and the firefighters come under separate organizations, and that's what it amounts to. And Mike told me that in some towns, they actually, Rockford, for instance.
A separate fire department.
They have a separate fire department with different colored fire trucks.
Why don't we add a third one?
What?
You can add a third one, Mike.
Color?
No, third fire department.
All right, so, motion, you made a motion.
We point.
Point then, second. Any other questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Done.
All right.
Doug Janvrin is the MS coordinator.
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Motion, motion made on Doug, Doug Janvrin, too.
You're seconding.
Janvrin, also?
Yep, okay.
So make sure someone seconds it and adds it.
Second?
Second.
Questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Is that done? All right. New business license, William Powers doing business as Willie P. Dogs at eighty-six Newbury Port Turnpike for a hot dog stand. Come on up, tell us about it. And you're, I saw on the paper today that some of your competition just passed away.
Oh, really?
Yeah, Nina's Weenies.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's.
Newbury Ford?
Yeah, she died unexpectedly, so anyway.
All right, what it is, is a family friend has a used car dealership, classic cars, American muscle cars, and we thought that adding hot dog carts out front would kinda add to it, with the American cars and American hot dogs and stuff. And it was gonna be like a Thursday, Friday, Saturday thing, strictly hot dogs, potato chips, and canned soda.
Okay, and so you don't need safe serve for hot dogs already cooked, right?
Yeah, all pre-cooked, caving.
All right, now, do you have to get Board of Health inspection or approval?
It's gonna be a new cart.
Yeah.
But once we get the new cart, we make sure it's got all the, all the requirements. I looked into it, you have to have like a shield to keep the public from sneezing on the hot dogs and.
Okay. What?
Do you have a pedal license for that?
No, not the, yes.
Is that a pedal, pedal cart?
And, and you're gonna have it in the parking lot, so it won't be out near the road and traffic and stuff.
Yeah, correct, and we're gonna put it exactly in the parking lot, it's gonna be a propane truck.
Okay, all right, motion?
Yeah, motion to approve.
Second? Any other questions for him? Discussions, comments, advice? No? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, congratulations.
Good luck with that, I was by your establishment the other day, I really liked that, that's shock.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The crowds draw a lot of attention, so, I mean, the cars draw a lot of attention.
Yep.
Okay, new business license, Aaron Bly doing business as Dancing Goat Dairy at thirty-one Southern Boulevard. Could you introduce yourself, I failed on that one, so that the people know who you are.
I'm Aaron Bly, and I own a small herd of goats. So currently, we're, you know, a herd of ten dairy goats. Our physical location is on Parker Street, and thirty-one Southern Boulevard is a home office. So for the first year, we're just making goat milk soaps and other bath-and-body products, hoping to sell those in farmers' markets and in local craft fairs. And then, long-term goals, we're looking through all the options for building a small cheese facility. So we're in discussion with, you know, Board of Health here, Mass State, Department of Public Health, but that's very early stages now, so that probably wouldn't be in operation until next year, even if everything goes through approvals.
The question I got is, you've got an address here, how about a motion?
Okay, motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, the, other, other than the first comment, you've got here an address on Southern Boulevard.
Yes.
Is that where you're gonna be doing this?
No, this is just the, yeah, a home office.
Okay.
Currently, we're, we're down, and we're looking to build everything down on Parker Street, but because there's no mailing address for us there, we wanted that to be the.
Okay, mailing address only, okay.
Yeah, 'cause that's not zoned agricultural down there.
With a P I O D, yeah, that was my concern.
You beat me.
For Parker Street?
No, Southern Boulevard, that's the mailing address, but she's gonna be working out of Parker Street.
You can run a business out of there, it's the same question as owning. Was that why it's here?
Is this a customary home business or not, I think is?
Yeah, I think that an office type thing, where you're not.
Yeah, that would seem like a customary.
Yeah, the office part of it.
Yeah, we have other people out there that have little offices in their homes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I'm for this.
Yep.
You're for this?
Yep.
Wild and Gravy?
I think it's good, as long as it's an office and home business, I think I'll always support.
I feel the same way.
Yeah. All right, any other comments?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Good luck to you, best of wishes.
All right, what else we got?
Sign warrant for town election. Okay.
No.
After the election.
All right, have you got a copy, Kathy?
We have, yeah.
Motion?
Uh, motion to approve, motion to sign the law, whatever it is.
All right, second?
Second.
Okay. Do you wanna look at it for us, or just sign it? This has been prepared by Leslie, so we don't really, by Leslie, but, so we don't have, we sign it, but don't have much to do with it.
Please, if you want this one?
All right.
You go on.
What?
You can go on, we'll sign it.
Okay. Did we motion and vote on it? We didn't vote on it.
Did we vote? We didn't vote, we motioned. Right, call them.
Motion, second, all in favor of signing the town warrant?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a one-day liquor license, Newbury Five Protection Fire Company, two, for function May third, from one thirty to five thirty PM at Fireman's Memorial Hall.
Motion to approve.
Second. Oh, everything's in, all right, Kathy, on that? Okay, questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, new business license, Michael Duffield, DVA, Newbury Kayak and Canoe at two ninety-one High Road, retail sales, Michael.
Ah, there you are.
Hi, I'm Michael Duffield. So this is Fernald's Marine, so I, my wife and I have bought Fernald's, and we are going to, it will be Newbury Kayak and Canoe, and it's gonna be kayaks, canoes, and stand-up paddle boards, and more or less what it was before, so.
All right. Motion?
Yeah, motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? Pretty quick comments? Questions, comments?
You gonna sell sailboats?
Not at the start, you know, I don't know sailboats, and they're a lot more complicated than I think of them. A lot more to go wrong on a sailboat.
Tell me about it.
You gonna do wind surfers?
Proverbial hole in the water.
We may get towards our wind surface, you know, the start, we've got the paddle boards, and it's a pretty logical extension to get into wind surfers from there, so. and it's a pretty logical extension to get into windsurfers from there, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Good luck.
One-day liquor license, Matthew Coburn slash NS bartenders for a wedding.
Spencer Pierce Little Farm.
Spencer Pierce Little Farm, May 3rd, 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. Motion to approve, everything all right, Kathy?
Yes.
Second?
Second to motion.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. As an afterthought thing, you know, this is something that we've looked at, the 30, 30-day thing on, we've looked at them, and it's usually one or two a month at the most, so.
Oh, very most.
Yeah, Spencer Pierce Little?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. The minutes of the April 9th meeting, these are ones you sent through electronically?
Yes.
Okay, did you get them on drop boxes and computer? Okay. Motion?
Motion, make a motion, we accept them as red.
Second to motion.
Second? Any deletions, corrections? You all right, Caleb?
I am.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, done. All right, have we had any communications? Not really. I've got a document here from Mermac Valley Planning Commission on telling what they've done for the past year and what their plans are, and, is there anyone else? Anyone go to any meetings?
Yeah, Tracy and I went to a volunteer appreciation luncheon for the Council on Aging. There was a lot of people there, it was over to the fire station, and they, it was amazing just how many people, 10 years and 15 years, I was really, really impressed with the amount of people there. So it was a good time and good luncheon, and thought I'd mention that. And one other thing to note is, Dan McGuire of the Byfield Water District ran the Boston Marathon and completed it. I just thought we'd give him a congratulations for that.
Okay, that's good for him. Jeff and I attended the MRBA meeting last Friday, and the good thing was, within the next week or two, they're going to complete the reconstruction of the South Jetty, and that'll be complete as designed by the Army Corps of Engineers, and they have the money available so they can start the plans for the North Jetty. And they really think that they can get it done, have everything ready to go out on bid by this fall. So it'll be a next winter project, and they're working, they're actually working with DCR right now for access to the jetty through the Salisbury Beach Reservation. So that'll be a project that was started a long, long time ago, and.
All good news.
Yeah, real good news from that.
I mean, Joe's right, I mean, if you think about it, I mean, who'd have ever thunk it, jetties would be rebuilt. And I think we have to, you know, thank all the people that have been involved locally, politically, and then Sean Keeney and the larger crew at the federal level, because I didn't, in my wildest dream, I never thought the jetties would be rebuilt, never.
Well, Senator Tosh sat there and said, if we work together, we can do it, and that's what happened.
Formed the group, and that's what it did.
Yeah.
And the Corps of Engineers, a special thanks to, great job.
Matter of fact, I think, you know, when they finally moved out and stuff, I'd like the town in Newbury, and we can do it through a selectmen's meeting, send the Army a lot of thanking them, because they've been so helpful.
Very first class. I mean, if you go to the meetings, you can really see they've been first class. Okay, good.
Okay. Anything else?
Just warrants.
Warrants, that's what we've got.
Senator Warr's.
No executive session, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Isn't there other things to sign?
Yeah, Kathy's got, we're going to be signing here for a while, but we do that for adjourned. All right.
We made the motion, we adjourned.
Made the motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned. All right, Kathy's got.